Businesses, so, thank you for-
Thank you. That sure looks cool when you see your local businesses do as well as they've done. So many careers and I know you that today battles have a lot to do with that for interaction with all of the, you know, comparisons and all of the, anybody else have comments?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, our next item on the agenda in our audience is business. Is there any one in our audience who'd like to address this on any topic? At this time, we'd be delighted to hear from them. We'll move on, move about minutes. We have two sets, one session for twenty-four and a regular session for twenty-four. The motion, Mr. Mayor, I propose that we accept the motion by the work session, day eight, twenty-four. Okay. All right, the motion made second, we're not for work session minutes, late for twenty-four, two thousand, twenty-three. Any concerns, comments, additions? If not, miss Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Kim. The regular session, please. Mr. Mayor, I propose to approve the motion for the session, day eight, twenty-three. I'm sorry, twenty-four, April, two thousand. Okay.
Second.
All right, the motion made second, we're not for work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments, any questions about this, Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. We have one public hearing, receipt of bids for sale of property located in the middle of legacy community, ranking.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As Councilwoman called at your last meeting, Council authorized staff to make this solicitation on their behalf during this process forth. It is repubbly advertised, solicit sealed bids. If we receive one or more bids, we'll first open the public hearing and then court will open and read the sealed bids in their entirety. And following that, any person that may wish to speak about the sealed bids or just the sale of the property in general is welcome to speak as part of the public hearing. It's always been your practice that following that public hearing, table the matter for a minimum of two weeks to allow additional time for the public if they have an interest in that to respond. Because they're not all, all twelve thousand people have seen here the sealed bids.
Okay. We have a second, we're in the second of the public hearing here, Miss Kim.
We received one bid, properties, the two parcels of land totaling seven, seven acres in the middle of the legacy community. The Big Woods Development Company, a one-ten minute place in Uptown, Virginia, has been one, at one hundred thousand dollars. They're offering a deposit of five thousand dollars upon City Council bid acceptance. The terms would be ninety-five thousand dollars cash at closing, and the closing would be thirty days from satisfaction of all contingencies listed below. The contingencies, approval by the Pecoson City Council on inclusion of these parcels for residential use into legacy of the Pecoson Master Plan at terms and conditions acceptable to purchaser. Second contingency, ability of purchaser to obtain owner's title insurance at customary rates.
Mr. Spencer signed on five, eight, twenty-three.
Okay, thanks, Kim. All right, the public hearing is open. Does anyone wants to address this at all?
I don't, I doubt there's gonna be a question.
I'm not seeing any, so let's close the public hearing and get a motion to table this for two weeks.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right, motion made second, we table this item for two weeks.
Any concerns, any comments, questions? If not, Miss Kim?
Thank you. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Move on to unfinished business, second reading, final adoption of the F R twenty-four annual financial report. Take these individually, I believe the vice mayor's queued up to do each one of these separate. So, Peter?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to lay a dollar, eleven cent levy per one hundred dollar assessed value on all real estate in the city of Pecoson, Virginia, for the general operation of various departments of the city government. And I would like to note that that is a two-cent reduction from the previous rates.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions? Seem none, Miss Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Kim. The ordinance establishing the tax rate for personal property. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to lay a four-dollar-and-fifteen-cent levy on all personal property, a point-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-cent levy on all watercraft, a dollar-fifty levy on all privately-owned camping trailers and motorhomes, and a dollar-one levy on all vehicles without moving power used or designed to be used as a manufactured home in the city of Pecoson for the general operation of various departments of the city government.
Okay, thanks, sir. The motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any comments, concerns, any questions? Not, Miss Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Mr. Vice Mayor, the third?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance amending chapter eighty-two, article two, section eighty-two dash forty, schedule of sewer rates and charges of the code of ordinances of the city of Pecoson, Virginia.
Okay. A second? All right, the motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comments, questions? Not, Miss Kim?
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance amending chapter sixty-six, article two, section sixty-six dash forty-two, collection and charges, and chapter sixty-six, article three, section sixty-six dash sixty-three, exemption, eligibility, and generally reduced collection charges of the code of ordinances of the city of Pecoson, Virginia.
Okay, do it. Map for one.
Yeah.
A second? Do we have a second? Oh, okay, can you, all right, we have a motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comment, any questions? Not, Miss Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am, we got one more. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to appropriate funds to the various governmental funds of the city of Pecoson, Virginia for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, do it.
Second.
All right, the motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Miss Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Move on to new business, first item, ordinance making additional appropriations fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, general fund. My finance director is at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Hassel.
Good evening.
As you know, periodically, we bring donations to the city council for appropriation. Two city departments receive donations, which are one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for the library and six hundred and fifty-four dollars for the fire department. And these will be used by the departments for their intended uses. Additionally, the city applied for and received a Virginia Risk Sharing Association grant totaling fifteen hundred dollars for a Virginia Women's Municipal Leadership Institute scholarship. Tanya was selected out of fifty applicants as part of the twenty women cohort to participate in this leadership institute. So this is a wonderful opportunity for her to attend some leadership sessions. Um, so attached, you have an ordinance for the city council's consideration to appropriate the additional three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars in revenue and expenditures in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three general fund. And I would be happy to answer any questions in the head.
All right, any questions, Tara? You did such a good job, nobody has a question. Thank you, Tara. Okay, we have an ordinance there that we need to do.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three in general fund.
Okay. All right, the motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comments? All right, Miss Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, second item on the new business, an ordinance making additional transfer fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through Capital Projects Fund for Pecoson High School softball scoreboard and audio.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and city council members, we received a request from Mr. Tillot with the schools to transfer ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the Pecoson Middle School replacement scoreboard account to provide a sound system at the Pecoson High School softball scoreboard. On February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the city council approved the appropriation of forty thousand dollars for a replacement scoreboard to be located at the athletic field behind the middle school. This scoreboard project was completed and the total cost was twenty-eight thousand, sixty-seven dollars, which left eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars remaining available in this project account. So attached, you have a appropriation for city council's consideration to transfer ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three within the Capital Projects Fund for the high school softball scoreboard audio. And I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have Mr. Tillot here from the schools tonight, if you have any specific questions about the project.
Tara, thank you. Is there a question?
A question, is, is there a audio system in the one at First Field for the baseball team? No?
For the baseball team?
Baseball, yeah. Okay. I just appreciate your bringing the women up speed. This is good.
All right, any other questions, Tara? Thank you, ma'am. This is another addition to what are already beautiful fields throughout this season. Those folks do a tremendous job to keep doing what we do. And we, with my grandson playing baseball, I have an opportunity to go to just about everywhere. And there's no comparison, absolutely no comparison to our fields and, and the other places that we go. Yeah, I'm proud. I'm just proud to watch, you know, have people come in and see what, what we've done. And so Randy, that, you know, those guys do that. We need to make a special effort to tell them that council really appreciates what they do.
I'll do that. Glad to.
Okay, let's move on to, are we already done that one? Let's go on to comments of the city.
We gotta do an ordinance.
Oh, that ordinance here, okay. Sorry, thank you. Did we have a motion? I was talking, if you did, I'd hear.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making an additional transfer for Pecoson High School softball scoreboard audio for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three in the Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, y'all must watch the scoreboard. Okay, we had a motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Uh, don't hear any, Miss Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Go back to Kim, comments of the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have two upcoming school board appointment terms ending in June. One is an at-large and one is a central. We have two incumbents that are eligible for reappointment. An advertisement will be placed in the paper, the city website, electronic sign, and the city television, television station this week, advertising the seats and the deadline of applications. All applicants, including the incumbents, if they're interested in reappointment, will need to turn in to the city manager's office an applicant, a board bank application by May twenty-second by four-thirty. On the evening of May twenty-second, a public hearing will be held at the city council meeting, and the names of the interested applicants will be read into record at that time. Per the adopted SOP, central precinct council members will need to give their recommendation of who they would like to interview, if any, for central precinct by June fifth, and the same would go for Mayor Hassel and Vice Mayor Freeman to recommend who they would like to interview, if any, for the at-large spot by June fifth as well. Interviews will be conducted in a closed session at the June twelfth council meeting. At that meeting, council can reconvene and appoint who they have chosen to fill the seat or postpone until the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Any questions, Kim? Okay, all right, thanks, Kim. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the comments of the city manager, Mr. Wheeler.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Okay. Let's start with David, some council directives, Kenny?
Thank you, Gordon.
Yes, sir.
I do have some comments I'd like to share.
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to speak to the budget that we've just passed tonight and my combined years on the school board as well as my time served on council. This is the twelfth budget that I've been involved with, and I must say this is easily among the most remarkable budgets that we've passed. I think the manager and staff has done an outstanding job this year in particular for striking a healthy balance between meeting the needs of the city with emphasis on public safety, uh, special emphasis on making our city more competitive when it comes to hiring and retaining top-notch employees. We've been able to help our employees on, on, on a personal note, which is, of course, very important to us as well. We've been able to provide some additional funds to the schools and very, very thankful to be in a position to do that because, as we know, we have existed as a town and then as a city, uh, going all the way back to nineteen fifty-two because of the schools, and that, that makes us pretty special. So with that being said, the schools will always be a cornerstone, and we're happy to, to be in a position, very thankful to provide the additional support, uh, also help the school system, but do for, for, for their folks what we've been, been able to do for ours this year, and also thankful to be able to, to do all this, uh, based on some serious number crunching by, by the manager and staff to actually lower the, the real estate tax rate by a couple of pennies, which is, is not a tremendous amount, but at least we can do a little something to, to help offset the increase in cost, uh, to our citizens. So, thanks to all for that. And, uh, I try to be opportunistic when it comes to looking for, for ways to, to share positive comments. And two success stories that I'd like to speak to, just to spread a little bit of goodwill. If y'all recall, back in January, we passed a conditional use permit for the Airbnb on With Creek Road, and then not too long after that, we passed another conditional use permit for Caleb Howard's Topstream Exteriors Business on Pecoson Avenue. And I think both of these processes are testimony to the effectiveness and efficiency of, of our city policies, especially when administered by such an outstanding staff. But I think what this represents is, is teamwork between our city staff, existing city businesses, supporting new businesses coming in adjacent to them, uh, one of which was, uh, a nearly a hundred-year-old business that's been in the city, uh, since, since the nineteen twenties, to, to be understanding and welcoming, uh, of a, of a business that's owned by a hometown boy that he's gonna move back into town. And from what I can see, just from riding by casual observations, it looks like the, the storage yard down on Pecoson Avenue for Topstream Exteriors is coming along nicely, and I, I think that's, that'll certainly be an asset to the community. And going back to the Airbnb, uh, I have personal knowledge, and, and without going in, into detail, out of respect for, for, for people's privacy, uh, the availability of that home in such a timely manner, uh, turned out to be a great asset to some folks in town. And I'm so thankful that we were able to come together, uh, as, as a council, uh, to be able to alleviate any concerns that, that we may have had. And, uh, I, I know that if that was not available when it was, uh, circumstances would have been more, more difficult. So it was a really special, but not to mention the fact that I've heard numerous comments that the Airbnb, uh, folks took what was an eyesore in a conspicuous location and turned it into a very nice-looking home. So the, these are two very, very good examples, I think, of how successful we can be when the community, city staff, council, we, we all come together, uh, to, to serve the greater good of the community. So I, I thank all of all for that. So, thank, thank y'all for, for taking the time to, to let me share some comments tonight.
Well said, Dave. Well said.
Keith?
Uh, yes, two things, Mayor. Uh, I think in large part to charity's work, uh, my application for membership on the Langley Civic Leader Association was accepted, and I'll be attending their bi-monthly meetings and reporting back on the progress and the plans that they have coming in the future months. Also, over, on Sunday, I was able to go down and visit the Road to War Display that was at the Pecoson Museum. It was very enjoyable to me personally because I was able to talk to those that were representing the Army from World War II era, uh, in European theater where my father served, uh, from forty-three to forty-five, and just getting to know them, then I visited the other sites as well. It was just a well, well display, and I appreciated all the, the young men that were there.
Okay, thank you. Bud?
Yes, I'd like to second all the comments made so far and thank the citizens of Pecoson who pay attention to the city government, those here and those watching at home. I'd also like to congratulate all the businesses in Pecoson who won awards in the Coastal Virginia magazine. And, uh, I'd like to let everybody know that we have a new aviator in the city of Pecoson, and I'm proud to welcome her as such. Ms. Becky Borison was selected today.
Yeah.
Out of the sixty nominees, to be the hero of the town, okay? And she now has flown aerobatics with the Air Force Thunderbird, something I wish I could do, okay? But anyway, I welcome her in the aviator class and, uh, glad to have her on.
Ms. Becky, it's, um, I think, I think I've got this right, last year, um, with her connections, they baked, baked over two hundred thousand cookies to get them to troops that are overseas. Um, she is dedicated to veteran services. I mean, she really is, she goes all out. Uh, I wish I could have seen her when she got off that plane, just to make sure.
I'd have been green.
All righty, anything else? All right, we gotta close session. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, forgive me. I missed both of y'all.
We don't count.
Jenna, please.
Um, I just have a letter that I want to read. My fellow councilmen already have this. Um, Mayor Hassel and fellow city council members, it is with a heavy heart that I need to inform you, I will be stepping down from my... Sorry.
Take it down.
City Council C, effective Tuesday, May ninth. Sorry, I didn't think I would be emotional about this. Due to a change in my personal situation, that may necessitate my moving out of Pecoson. In recent events, I feel it is time for me to step down from my position on city council. It has been my honor to be able to serve my community for the past six years. This experience has been one of the most interesting and valuable of my life, learning how a government works from the inside has been something I will always value and take with me. The amount of work by paid and unpaid people in our community that keep our wonderful city running is awe-inspiring. Our city operates like none other, mostly in good ways that benefit the citizens in our small, unique town. I have learned so much working with my fellow council members who have such knowledge and experience. I experienced what it's like to be the only councilwoman on a city council. At times, this provided challenges that were good life experiences, and mostly, it has been wonderful. The experience has helped me grow as an individual and has shaped me and taught me many things that I will carry with me. I thank each of you for the support you have shown through the years and will be forever grateful for my time here. If my circumstances change and I indeed am able to remain a Pecoson resident, I hope to continue to serve my community in many ways. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
We need to thank you, Jenna, for your-
Hard decision to make, but, um, one that it was time for me to make, so. Um, and I wanted to ask Randy, too, 'cause I, you know, especially with Councilwoman Fox stepping down, if you could, if you wouldn't mind explaining, you know, to the public, like, what the process is, like, what happens when a councilperson steps down, like, what happens after that happens, just, just for information purposes for our community.
If you'd like, I, probably the legal aspect of that, I'll defer to the city attorney, and then if there's something else, I'll add to it, if that's all right?
Okay. Wayne?
Well, the process is that, uh, the city is required to notify the circuit court judge within fifteen days to enter an audit to hold a special election, and that election will be in November at the regular general election. And the council has forty-five days to appoint, for the resignation, to appoint a replacement to serve until the November election. That, uh, appointment would go to the, begin to the court, and the court would enter an order, uh, appointing that person at the city council, uh, appointment resolution to serve until the general election. Then the person who, whoever, whoever decides to run, there'll be a deadline, they have to, uh, declare that they're going to run for the position, it's an August date, I have it in my folder, I can tell you, but it's an August date, you have to notify the Board of Elections that you're going to run in the November election so you can get on the ballot. And then that, whoever is successful in November will serve the remainder of the unexpired term.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Karen?
Well, I'm gonna miss you.
I'm gonna miss you guys, too.
I've been sitting next to you for six years, and I hate to see you, you go. Other than that, uh, I think Councilman Hux, uh, summed up things really, really well, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Jenna, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And whatever, you know, however it turns out for you, we're, we're appreciative of your service, for sure. And, uh, you know, just, can I speak?
Thank you.
Speak. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Before we go further, I, I would like to, uh, personally stand up and give her an applause. Absolutely.
You guys don't need to.
Okay, you, you were done. See, our delegate has come into the room. Did you have anything that you want to talk to us about? Um, jump right up, jump right up here to the podium and, uh, tell us what's going on in Richmond. You have a budget yet?
Uh, we, uh, do not have anything but our skinny budget. They're, they are still working on the full budget, um, waiting for the governor. We're expecting that the governor will declare a, uh, a special session for the budget and judges, and we will be, uh, we will work, uh, work on that. I, I do believe that we're going to get a budget.
I don't think anyone in an election year wants to have no budget, no full budget, so I don't expect that to not occur. So I'm thinking that will come down soon. I don't know when the governor's going to declare that, but I do expect it to come at just about any day now, because I'm sure we want to, probably going to be sometime right after the primaries, so that's what I would expect. But besides that, Richmond is quiet because no one's there and everyone's running and hitting ground, so. But I'll keep, uh, keep my ear to the ground, and as soon as I know something, I will be back to let everyone else know exactly what's going on.
We appreciate that. We really appreciate, appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about the delegate or those? Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate you being here.
And thank you for your service, Ms. Andrews.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
All righty, we have a closed session. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss a personnel matter, and pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to consult with the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made, second. We go to closed session. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Keith.